Sorry, got to turn my mic on. What calls me to order? Can you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one day under the sun in this world, in this world.
Thank you.
Yes, she may. Councilmember Kelly.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty. Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Grineal.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney is present remotely.
Hello, Andrew.
Hello, Mayor.
Hi, Andrew.
Hi, Andrew.
Hello, everyone.
Introductions, presentations, proclamations, we have none. Call to the public, individuals requesting to speak, please complete the speaker comment card and return to the clerk.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is encouraged. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. The total time for call to the public may be up to thirty minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date or responding to criticism. I have not had any comment cards. Was there anybody that wanted to speak at call to the public?
All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Current events, summaries and reports. This item is for information only. The mayor and the council member or town manager may present a brief summary or report of current events. If listed below, there may also be a presentation on information requested by the mayor and council and questions may be answered. No answer, no action will be taken. I'd just like to commend all the town staff for the great territorial day celebrations and fireworks. It was awesome. And a great job. And that's all I have.
Um, I just. Is my mic working?
I don't think it's speaker.
It is, okay. Um, we had the nine eleven memorial service on Sunday. Great turnout from community members, um, not community members, visitors, staff, council members. The full video was recorded by Compass Training Center. John Stankowitz was the keynote speaker and it is available on Facebook. Next year, we're doing the same thing, September eleventh, eight thirty, and it will be the ten year anniversary of when the statue was placed. So it's another big milestone for the memorial. So I encourage you guys to check it out next year if you didn't make it. And with that, that's all I have.
Outstanding job by our vice mayor at that ceremony also.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Done?
Have it over here.
Nothing.
No. Indy?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Um, and I want to echo your sentiments about the staff on that such a great event, so well attended, and it took so much work behind the scenes to get that done. So I want to recognize them and thank them for that as well. And speaking of events, we also have a number of great events coming up over the next few months. Um, but a couple to highlight tonight, September seventeenth, we're having the Fourth Annual Hawaiian Luau, which supports our Chino Valley Police Foundation, and that's at four to seven at Memory Park. We also have our Food Truck Festival, um, which has been rescheduled, and that's on October first. So come out, that should be a great time. And we also have our, um, our National Night Out. Um, this is a great event. I attended that last year. Such a great opportunity to get out and get to know your police officers and your neighbors. So I invite everyone who can come out, again, that's in Memory Park, Tuesday, October fourth, from five to nine. And like I said, we have a number of other great events going on, so just check our website and come out and join us for those. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. All those items listed below are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Any council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda to be considered and discussed separately. Anything on this side you'd like to say? Yeah. Over here?
Nope. I would like to, um, pull five C and E for discussion.
C and what?
E.
E is an Edward.
Yes.
Okay, we'll entertain the motion.
I will make a motion. We approve consent agenda items A, B, D, and F as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, item C, consideration possible action to approve the development agreement with Brown Homes for a construction trailer and sales trailer for the Perkinsville forty-four subdivision.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
I will.
Um, just want to get into questions. You have something specific?
Well, just to get into the meat of it, I read, um, I read the agreement, and it didn't state whether or not the property owner was being compensated.
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted to know either the, if Brown Homes representative were here or the property owner was here.
Both of them are here.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. So specific to them.
It is.
Okay.
Whoever wants to come up first. How about Brown Homes? Hi.
Good evening.
You guys are wasting no time moving on that project.
We, we don't like to have weeds growing under our feet.
Well, with all this rain. Apologize for the hiccups, but I'll take the rain. Um, my question is, I read over this, and the property, the trailer is, um, being moved to, um, is the owner of that property being compensated for up to three years?
Yes.
Okay. With that being said, Andrew, are you with me? Hi. Okay, um, I am concerned that there is, um, a conflict of interest because the property owner is a sitting planning and zoning commissioner. Help me out here, Andrew.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, and Vice Mayor, uh, the only way that we would be concerned about a pecuniary conflict of interest, which would be one that would give us pause under the, the statute, is if one of the council members who is making the decision tonight has a vested interest in a money interest in the deal. Um, the development agreement itself, I don't believe, uh, P and Z has an official sign off on it, as it would be if it were a zoning related item. Um, so I, you know, your concern would be, um, much more, um, in line with, uh, our normal thinking if we had, uh, like a regular P and Z item coming to you. I apologize for my voice, but I'm fighting something now too, so probably hard to hear.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
That's all I need, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You sir.
You bet.
All right, are you done there, Ian?
I am done with C.
Okay, good. Uh, item E, consideration possible action to prove the first amendment to the grounds lease with Ikor's Aerosop LLC for approximately thirty-six point seven-two acres of land at Old Home Manor. Terry's here.
Yes, I am.
Hey, Terry. Okay. And this is under consent agenda, so I don't know if you have, um, in the packet has the revised contract, the proposed revised contract, but not the original one, um, that I saw. I could have missed it. I could have missed it. Did anybody see it? The old one and the new one?
I thought they were both in there.
Okay, cool.
Yep, I think.
Um, my concern was when I saw the correction, it was a couple of things. The mutter is no longer a planned event in the future.
The, the last mutter was actually in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. It was canceled. There was only, I was looking back through the history, only seven people signed up. Mm-hmm. They've kind of, it was a kind of a fad. They also with COVID went away. We looked up to see what was happening, and there's a few, um, like the mutter had me, I think, uh, fourteen events across the country. There was one in Arizona, in Phoenix. They just aren't as prolific as they were before. We have not been contacted by them, um, to come back, so we don't expect it. Uh, and as such, we'd hate that to impact something that we don't see or have had no contact with impacting something that's already here viable. The course, most of the course is still preserved, and they're on site and they've worked, um, there, there're just obstacles around it, but the problem with the original one, all of them had to be able to be removed within a week's notice. So they were very temporary. The feedback they're getting from people that like to hide behind things, have structures, um, and they're not able to do that with the current terms because we have to, they have to be able to take them down within a week's notice if we need it because of, we had preserved that originally, thinking that year, their first year, the mud run was going to be in October, and then it was canceled. So this will give the afternoon to build more permanent barriers, but the course will still, is still in place out there.
Okay, so my understanding is, um, my understanding and, and as the tenant Icor Airsoft people here, hi guys, um, the justification was that they weren't doing so well in the first year because of the obstacles needing to be.
They were, and they could probably come up and I will let them talk, but they weren't doing as well as they thought they would, and their feedback was they could do even better. People would come back if they had more of these amenities and then on the course, more permanent structures like they have. And do you want to speak to specifically?
And okay. And will we still, one last thing, Terry, will we still have the ability to use that property throughout the year? The specific number, I think we said six times?
Yes, we still retain the ability. We just have to give them longer notice, um, and we'll work around permanent structures that they may build, more permanent structure. You want to speak to that?
Could you speak to the permanent structures, please?
No worries. What we have right now is things that we can move within a week. So they're very small, um, and they're very prone to weather. So the timeframe that we spend building more barriers to have cover for our players ends up being split between actually placing barriers and fixing the existing barriers.
Okay.
So if we could have barriers that didn't have to be moved that quickly and, uh, could remain not on the mud run path, then that's going to be able to provide structures that aren't going to blow over in our beautiful Chino wind and then fall apart.
Understandable. Okay, so the, those structures will stay intact.
Yes.
And the permanent structures.
Well, they're not permanent in a way that would be considered like building permanent. They're permanent in the way that we don't have to remove them in a week. And preferably, we wouldn't have to remove them at all.
Right.
When you guys need the track for whatever you decide you need it.
Okay, um, something.
From their website, and it shows that where the track is and where some of the fixtures are, and there is opportunities to build things that keep the track itself.
You can just pass it along.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's a.
If they built those things and they were right, not on the path itself, but off to the sides, then if they did come back, the path would still be preserved.
And with, when we say, um, permanent or whatever, um, I'm assuming those will be built to code to requirements.
Yes, whatever would be required, most definitely. Though, right now, we basically have, um, pallets that we have hinged so they can be folded and removed quickly.
Ouch.
Yeah, and the wind is really beating them up, poor things. Uh, so what we would be building now would be structures that would be three to four sided, that can still be taken down if necessary, but not obviously within a week.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the, uh, other comment than the conversation that we had, you know, they have, um, bed good tenants here, and they are residents. They have the facility here and the one in Prescott Valley, um, and there's conversation, uh, if it were to grow, they would love to move their, um, headquarters potentially here in the future as opposed to there. So that's just another reason, you know, we would like to partner with them as best as possible, uh, to keep them here.
Okay, thank you.
Good on that one?
I am.
Okay, um, I guess I kind of screwed up because we should have had a vote on C, so, um, before we did E, but let's back up to C and do a, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve consent agenda, item C is written.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Motion carries, and now we can do a motion for E.
I will make a motion, we approve consent agenda, item E as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That carries. Okay, now we're on to action items. Consideration impossible action to approve ordinance number two zero two two nine two two regarding the home detention program, Joan Dryer residing magistrate. And friends.
And court administrator. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and Council. So I understand in your packet, you have the information as far as changes to the home detention. We have been in contact with the town attorney, and his recommendation would be that, uh, the reference to COVID in the present ordinance be removed, the new ordinance enacted, making home detention a permanent option, and then that would repeal the old ordinance. So I understand that you may have some questions regarding the program. No?
Questions on this side?
No.
Eric, just over nine days, they would go on the home detention.
So it is for extreme or super extreme DUIs, and that is just because of the nature of the number of days in jail. So right now, if you're charged with what I call a baby DUI, a DUI to the slightest, an O eight, or even a DUI drugs, you're looking at ten days in jail, nine days suspended. So with that, um, you have to serve the one day in jail. There's no getting around it. Once you get into the extreme and the super extreme, you have to serve twenty percent of the mandatory portion. And so with an extreme, you're looking at thirty days in jail, twenty-one days can be suspended. You would have to serve nine days. How you serve that would be two days in jail, and then the other seven by ankle monitor. For a super extreme, it's forty-five days in jail, thirty-one days can be suspended. You would serve fourteen. Out of that, three days would have to be in jail.
And they're able to go to work at all?
That's the whole idea with the ankle monitor. So with home detention, you are wearing an ankle monitor. Let me pass this out because we're using SCRAM. So this will let me.
Say, say again the name of the contract?
This is SCRAM?
Okay.
And the beauty of this, it also tests for alcohol every thirty minutes. So if you think you're gonna stay at home and enjoy yourself, um, it's not gonna happen. So not only does it monitor the GPS, and that way we can restrict, I actually had a guy who had an, had an extreme, and he was sentenced to obviously the thirty days in jail, twenty-one suspended, had to serve nine, drove a cement truck, needed to be employed by both his employer and his family. And so we restricted him to Chino, Prescott, and Prescott Valley. I wouldn't let him go outside the bounds of that, even though his work could have afforded that.
He got a DUI, how's he able to drive still?
Because it's, it's all in the timing, and it's in the thirty days. So once you get an ignition interlock, you can do it. So, yeah. Or he can hurry up and get it done before the thirty day suspension kicks in.
You got anything?
Well, I'm assuming that the, the reason you're bringing this to us is that you feel like this has been a successful program over the last year.
The other courts in Yabapai County are using it. So that's why we're one of the last ones to actually enact this.
Yeah, thank you.
How about over here?
Yes, sir.
How many cases in the last twelve months have you utilized home detention?
We have had twenty DUI cases that in the last, um, twelve months, and we had one home detention because that was the extreme DUI.
Okay, so you haven't had any cases of scumming or anything from the home detention?
No. And I had, I had another one that was a domestic violence, but that doesn't require an ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Oh, here you go. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Lee.
All right, thank you.
I'll turn it in motion.
I will happily make motion. We approve ordinance number two zero two two dash nine two two regarding the home detention program.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, consideration possible action to prove the amended and restated development agreement for Bright Star Properties with Estrella Vista Enterprises LLC, Mark Holmes Water Resource Consultant.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
How many slides you have?
You're hoping for three, aren't you? I have six.
Yeah, whatever.
I'm doing better. So development agreement, uh, for Estrella Vista Enterprises, otherwise known as Bright Star here in the town. I just wanted to, uh, for everybody's, um, geographic information, wanted to show you the location of Bright Star. So here we can see my cursor, that's State Route eighty-nine, going east off of State Route eighty-nine on Road Two North, about two miles. The red polygons is the, um, undeveloped areas within the Bright Star development, and then the area here on the north side is the developed implanted area of Bright Star. Total planted units at Buildout is about twelve hundred units. So this has been, um, a long-standing development in the town. In two thousand one, um, they had, the town approved a pre-annexation agreement. In two thousand two, the first development agreement was approved by the town. And then in two thousand eighteen, um, obviously, there's been some plating, uh, going on, and in two thousand eighteen, the town and Bright Star discussed various aspects of the development and the obligations. Um, in two thousand eighteen, we looked at these past agreements. There are numerous agreements and amendments and supplements, and it became extremely challenging to decipher all of them. So in two thousand nineteen, the town retained Michelle Van Quo- So in twenty nineteen, the town retained Michelle Van Quotham. She's a contracts and water rights attorney. Uh, to produce a new restated agreement and clean up the numerous past agreements. Um, especially it relates to water and sewer. That's why we had chosen her because many aspects are water related and sewer related. And in twenty nineteen, a new restated agreement was produced and sent to Bright Star um, and its attorneys for review. Many provisions were completed and outdated, so those were, um, we decided that between the town and the developer. Those completed um, items would be removed from the new restated, though will be the original um, agreements as an appendancy. Um, so we moved on with um, a meeting in twenty twenty between Bright Star and their attorneys and we reviewed a draft agreement. And then twenty twenty-one, both parties continued its reviews and red lines on the new proposed restated agreement. And here we are before you in twenty twenty-two, both parties have reached an accord regarding the new proposed restated agreement. Just to highlight some of the main point key provisions. So when Bright Star comes in for their, their next uh, new plat. A new master plan for the development will need to be completed with that next application. There's been certain road improvements and trail connectors that will be completed and the back of your packet in the agreement. There's a map that shows you the equestrian trail that connects Peavine up to Two North through their development. Along with Road Two North and Center uh, road improvement, Center Street improvements. Uh, the town will make forty-five point three acre feet of assured water supply credits available to the development. For the infrastructure improvements made to the town's water uh, system. This was an existing uh, term, but the details needed to be updated. The town will also make its physical availability determination, um, its PAD available. To the development for them to complete an analysis of assured water supply that would lock up. That portion needed for Bright Star for uh, the next ten years. Any future assured water supply needs beyond the forty-five point three acre feet. For the development will file the town's water use ordinance. And then any future fees, i.e. whether it's hookup fees, access or development fees or any other fees outside of this agreement. Will be on the obligation of the development. Bright Star's development has, uh, developer has signed the agreement in support for the new proposed agreement. Also, I did call the owner, uh, Mike Fan. He sends his apologies. He could not be here tonight with it due to a prior engagement, but sends his highest regards and apologies for not being here. If should you have any questions for him. And the town staff supports the proposed new Bright Star restated agreement. And um, recommend you approve the agreement. That concludes my presentation, very short by the way, agreement, uh, presentation and uh, would answer any questions at this time.
That slide doesn't count.
All right, five slides.
You good? Yeah, just a couple. Mark, um. Back in two thousand and one, when the whole conception of the pre-annexation, uh, pre-annexation existed, we already had a. Obligated forty-five point three, we already, how much water did we obligate acre feet to the whole entire project? And then how much have we done to date?
So with the pre-annexation agreement, um, I don't uh, quote me a hundred percent, I wasn't here at the time, but I, I don't think any water was obligated. For this subdivision with the pre-annexation or the original development agreement, there was a purchase of the town's. Um, out of its water portfolio.
Okay.
So the town actually is part of Old Home Manor, when it purchased Old Home Manor in the late nineties. That was an irrigation grandfather right, that was in extinguished many of those uh, acres. And the town acquired a large portion of extinguishment credits and they were made available to various developers throughout the community.
So this forty-five point three, does that come out of our bank per se, our water allocation bank?
Right now, it's going to come out of our water portfolio as reclaimed water. It's our only renewable supply we have. That we're currently generating on, on average per year over three hundred acre feet. So because of the improvements that were done to our water system, they um, spent one point eight million dollars. All on their dime to produce a brand new water production well, a one million gallon storage facility for water. For fire and development needs for the entire town service area and a booster station. And also the land associated with that project on their development. So one point eight, we calculated with the engineering assessments, how much money their development. Would be on the hook for as part of that overall cost. That was subtracted, anything above and beyond was basically the town's responsibility and partnership. We calculated that and agreed to pay in water credits at twenty-five thousand dollars per assured water supply credit. So it summed up to that quantity and I think that was, that agreement came about in around twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, thereabouts.
Perfect, thank you.
You bet, thanks.
I don't, I don't think I have anything. I'm, I'm just looking at the new twenty foot road pavement with. On East Road Two North. Unity Road has been a big source of issue, um, the whatnot, is. There any improvements? Is that part of three? Road improvements or is that just left out? I, it doesn't matter either way, I'm just curious.
So what you see on the map there is that eastern portion of Road Two North, which I think is part of that overall dust issue out there on the east side. Of Bright Star. Um, the equestrian tail, trail which runs um, from that segment of Road Two North all the way down to the Peavine and interconnects that as part of the. The town's uh, trail network. And then east Center Street, you see that road improvement on the bottom of their project would be required to be improved. But I don't, I don't know anything beyond this road to north up to your question. I'm sorry, I can't answer that at this time, but we can follow up with engineering if you'd like.
That's it, thank you. I was just hopeful for the folks on you off of Unity Road.
Nothing.
Good, okay, thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
We'll entertain the motion.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve action item six. Be approve the amended and restated development agreement for the Bright Star property with Estrella Vista Enterprises LLC.
Second.
Motion made in second, it all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, consideration possible action to prove the amended. To the existing medical marijuana project development rights site plan for AZ Organics LLC. Will.
Alrighty, mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, thank you. Um, as read, this is a requested amendment to the protected development rights for AZ Organics, um, for their cultivation site located on West Road Four South. The applicant, um, Chad Pipkins is in attendance this evening as long, as well as his um, contractor. So if you have questions dedicated to them at the end of this, they're more than willing to answer your questions. So kind of getting into it here, uh, this PDR was approved back in two thousand and sixteen. And associated with that PDR was a, an approved site plan. That site plan itself, um. Allowed for up roughly a hundred and twenty-two thousand square foot of cultivation building on site. Um, currently to date, there's been about thirty-six thousand square feet constructed, you can. That's um, identified by the orange on the left-hand side of your screen there. And so that remains. Leaves roughly eighty-four thousand square feet to be built. Um, the large quantity of that is associated in the center of the project itself. Spread over four proposed buildings consisting of two sections each. They're the ones. My mouth works here. Maybe, okay, located here. Um, so their proposed amendment is essentially to change the six remaining sections into a single building. Um, equating roughly to eighty-eight thousand two hundred square feet. Um, this proposed building will then be incorporated into the existing to seventeen thousand square foot buildings. Um, the building itself, if approved by council, will still need to come through the review process for development services, um, permitting, engineering, all the fun stuff. Um, and so since this was a council approved site plan, it does require council action to modify. With that, staff is forwarding a recommendation of approval to town council to approve this amendment.
I'm sorry, I know you said this, I'll be the first to ask question. But what was their original square footage and what's the new?
So square footage is still remaining the same, so there's, yep, same square footage, they're actually reducing it by about two hundred square feet.
So in essence, we're just going from four buildings to one same square footage. That's really the only thing they're requesting.
Why?
Why? Um, I can bring the applicant up if that's what you choose.
Sure, I'd like to know what his thoughts are and why he wants to do it.
Before we do that, let's, let's go with, see if anybody's got more questions.
Sure, okay. We're getting into my homework. Um, what is this zone currently?
Currently. I'm so sorry, I believe it is commercial light at this point in time. So this is an existing one, um, back dates back to twenty sixteen, so they're not going to have that industrial zoning. That would be required.
That was my concern is that there would be intention.
No, at this point, they're, they're. PDR was renewed for their last two year, or the only two year extension last year. And so they have roughly till July of next year to wrap up everything, um, and then the PDR expires.
Anything down here?
Nothing.
No. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
We'll talk to the owners. And I think your wise going to be cost.
Wise cost.
Hello, thank you for having me. Uh, our, and our reasoning for combining all the buildings is. As you all well know, costs have gone up considerably, so we're sharing a wall with existing buildings. And we're taking out one of the structures that you can see there on the. I guess the left side, yellow.
You can get there with the cursor, you should be able to get there with the cursor.
Cool. So this building is going to be taking, taken out. And we're going to combine all this into one for uh, expense purposes.
Strictly a cost and supply measure then.
Yes, sir.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, wait, anything else from this side? You guys over here, anything?
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Sir, can I get your name just for the minutes, please?
Okay, nothing else and we'll entertain the motion.
I make a motion, we approve the amendment to the AZ Organics existing protected development right site plan.
Second.
Motion made in second, it all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Items six D and E will be presented together. Consideration possible action to approve the Del Sol North Minor Subdivision. Final plot consisting of ten lots, one acre in size or larger and. E is consideration of possible action to prove the Del Sol Minor South subdivision final plat. Consisting of ten lots, one acre in size or larger.
Thank you, um, as read, this is uh, approval for two items here. We're looking at the. North and the south uh, minor subdivision final plats for the Del Sol development. Uh, this has kind of been a long time coming. Staff is excited to present this to um, council tonight. The initial submittal for this came in September of last year. So it's been under review for um, little over a year at this point and excited to bring it forward for your consideration. So the subject location itself, um, is approximately thirteen hundred feet south of West Perkins, or sorry, East Perkinsville Road. Following Salida Del Sol. The properties, it's three properties in total, making up just a hair under twenty-six acres. Currently, it's vacant land and has existing zoning of single family residential, one acre minimum. To the east of the project or proposed project is the Chino Meadows subdivision. And then to the, sorry, I believe I said east to the west. And then to the east is the Chino Meadows Unit Three undeveloped subdivision. So the proposal itself is two final plats, um, each of ten acres. The north is on the left-hand side of your screen and the south is on the right-hand side. Toting twenty lots, um, the lot size across the board is going to be one acre. The water supply and su- uh, sewer supply are going to be well inseptic. Uh, roads will be public and constructed to current standards of asphalt. And the developer will also be paving from the southernmost portion of their property, um. The Sledel Del Sol all the way up to Perkinsville Road. So Sledel Del Sol has been an unpaved road since its construction. Um, the developer is going above the code requirements and paving even further. And then in addition to this, there are these tracks A, B, C and D. Those will be the open space drainage and landscaping for this subdivision, which will transition me into this new topic here that's. The first for Chino Valley is a maintenance improvement district or a mid. Uh, maintenance improvement districts act similarly to homeowners association without the CCNRs. It essentially, um, they're solely for the maintenance and care of the open space and drainage areas. It acts as a, excuse me, it is yearly assessed as a property tax only on. The people who reside within that subdivision, so those twenty homes within there. Those are the only people who are paying into this, no other people from the community are. Um, it acts identically to the streetlight improvement districts that's found within Bright Star that you see yearly for renewal. Uh, and the initial first year maintenance cost will be funded by the developer. So with that, staff is forwarding to our recommendation here in phases, town council, one, that there's a public hearing held for both proposed plats. And two, approval for the north plat and the south plat. With that, I would be happy to open up.
Questions for staff?
No. I think it was good.
Can you go back to the first slide? There. How far or how close is the nearest sewer?
Thirteen hundred.
So we're a thousand feet away from having this project go on sewer, right?
I would reference.
Required, required.
Required distance.
Right?
Uh, yeah, correct, correct. I, I believe it is right at three hundred feet.
So I'm just curious, what would the cost roughly be? I know it's public works side, but what would the cost be to? If the town, let's just say hypothetically absorbed the one thousand feet.
Um, I do have a representative here from Public Works if you do wish.
It's, it's a million dollars a mile.
Yeah.
For famous asphalt? Well, the only reason, it's just, it's just a tragedy because we need more, every development we have, we should get on sewer. For, to, for recharge. And this is just another example of one that we're not going to do it because the distance is too far. And I just find it tragic that this is happening again. And I know it's not your fault or public works, but at some point, we got to find a way. To convince people we have to do this for sustainable water in the future. Well, isn't there water and sewer in Chino Meadows one?
There is, it's City of Prescott Water and then Town Sewer within there as well.
So even if we plugged over there, they hooked on for sewer?
You would have to go through, um, somebody's backyard in this case, um, and I, I don't know the specifics with as far as if it would work. That we can direct that to our public works.
He didn't want to come up here.
Mayor? Mayor, if I may. We did look at, we tried every option. We worked with the developer too to see if there was any way, because we had the same thought. Anything we could do, but the costs were just too great and nothing is programmed in our budgets to, to allow us to do that right now. But as we move forward with our master planning processes, these types of things are going to be considered in that. So we, we um, echo those sentiments, we know that, um, and we really tried, but we couldn't make it pencil out.
Well, at least my concern is shared. That's all I had.
No.
Okay, I, no questions.
I may have been voting, hang on.
Thank you, Will. Okay, um. Yes, sir.
On that, I totally agree with the concept that we should as soon as feasible. We get into having infrastructure of sewer and water for everything because I believe some reports were showing that. The seepage is contaminating the base, the water base.
Okay, Zap, can't have anything they want to say?
Don't be shy now.
Nope, yeah, do you have anything you want to say? Okay, we're going to open up a public meeting. Is the, no cards?
I did not receive any public comment.
Does anybody have any comments on this? Come on up.
Everybody close your eyes, we know who it is.
Mayor, Town Council, Rachel Ferno. Um, so I have a couple of questions about this project, um. I have a really hard time swallowing the twenty individual wells that are going to be punched over there. I think I share Mr. McCafferty's concern about. The extension of our water and sewer infrastructure. I'm a little confused by Will saying that's City of Prescott Water District. Like, what does that mean? Does that mean if they were to be hooked up to city water, that's why the trouble is you're going through someone's backyard because. It actually wouldn't be our water infrastructure they're pulling from, it would be City of Prescott's well, so I'm a little confused about that. Cindy says, you know, when we redo the general plan, that we'll be addressing those things, but redoing the general plan. Doesn't give us more money to solve those problems. So, I mean, we can redo that and we can say, okay, in this area, this is going to be, but. It seems like this is a common thing that's been happening that we're approving these projects, whether they're one acre or point one six acres. Um, and water is a real issue in our community. I'm sure you guys are, you hear it every single day. Um, I just. Um, I just, I know that Wright Homes is a great developer and they're doing good things in our community, they actually follow through with their projects. Don't let them linger for, you know, eight to ten years. But I just have a really hard problem with the idea of twenty new wells, we're already having issues with adequate water supply, um, being punched in that area, so. Yeah, those are my questions.
And what's your name again?
Rachel Ferno.
There you go.
Anyone else I can make, come, yeah, come on up.
Uh, Jay Bates with Wright Homes, uh, with regard to the water, Rachel, um, we're required to do an assured water supply through the state of Arizona. And they look at all the aspects of what the, the wells will impact the water supply.
Hey, Jay. You gotta, you gotta address us.
You need to keep facing this way.
Oh, okay, okay. She, she can hear you.
Uh, we do an assured water supply through the, uh, ADWR, state of Arizona. They look at the hundred year mark and then they ascertain the water under the subdivision and, and equate it to the twenty wells, we're going to be operating on those twenty lots. And then they give us an assured water supply certificate, uh, we've done that, we paid for that and it's already been issued.
Okay. Jay? Can I, Jay? Jay?
Jay.
For the, um, M I D, is it M I D? You guys are paying for the, what's the cost in that for the first year?
Not sure till we get it in, but we're going to put trees and plants and landscape rock and, and, uh, maybe a little fence across the project, it's going to be really nice when we get finished.
And then that'll go on the property taxes for the.
For the, the owners, correct.
For the residents.
Goes right on the tax bill, right?
You'll, you'll incur those costs until the home is assumed by a new purchaser, right?
Well, we'll incur the cost for the first year and if we have the houses after that, it's going to be a problem.
Don't be bought.
Mayor, can we have, uh, Mark explain to Rachel how City of Prescott? Or did he go? We, we can do that.
Sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, the City of Prescott supplies Chino Meadows with water, has supplied them with water, so they're their water lines there. Uh, to get the City of Prescott to agree to supply water to these lots, because you're backed up to it, it isn't a reality. Um, the idea that if we could get sewer up there to those, uh, it would be nice, everybody would like to see every drop of water go back to reclaim. But it's, money doesn't grow on trees and, you know, and, and we just, you know, it's, it's not there. And with that being said, it's not fair to hold up a person's development when they have property that they want to do something with, so, you know, unfortunately, it's what we're, it's what we're stuck with. Uh, we know that in the future, the goal is to get as much as we possibly can going back to reclaim and, uh, we're working on it, so.
So I just have a question. Yeah, okay, so I guess my question is, along Perkinsville, that is not our water line?
Yes.
Okay, so why can we not run from our water line across here to these properties?
Again, it comes down to the money side of it.
But that would be a viable option.
If we could find the money.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if Brown Homes can pay somebody to put their mobile on their lot, why can't you pay somebody for an easement across their property? Wait, see, you own all the way to here. You own all the way to there, well then that's not thirteen hundred feet. Right, so, so you'd only have to get this much from someone else and then you own the rest.
There's no easement though. That goes through.
Now that these wells will already be punched. Yeah, right? These wells will already be punched here before that ever happens. I just have a problem with that.
Okay. Out there on the left. We're gonna, whoa, I'm sorry, come on up.
Peanut matters, um, can you bring up that map? There's a mouse, the long track of land that you talked about.
It's, it should, the mouse should be there somewhere.
Is there.
Oh, there. So that piece of property that you own, how are you accessing that?
Okay, need to.
This way.
And get the mic down, please, just a little, we can't hear you. There you go.
This property has direct access to Two North, it's downhill all the way. So why can't they bring sewer and water?
Hang, hang on, we're, hang on, this is, you, you need to address us.
Okay.
And then, and he can rebuttal to us.
We're off subject here too.
Okay.
That's a future project, not what we're doing.
He's talking about the expense of running it up to Perkinsville, I'm saying, why can't it go downhill across this property to Two North and across? Since he already owns both, he doesn't have to have an easement, it's already his property.
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing now. And we'll do entertain them, any further discussion from the council?
Just in the future, I mean, I, I understand the developer's position and I'm not as concerned about the source of the water as I am about the recharge. You know, the collection of recharge to me is more important than whether we get it from city water or groundwater, you know, direct mi- water mining. But, and I understand in the general plan, but why, we really got to make that a big emphasis, because you know, I'm not going to get off too far in tangent, but I've been studying this a lot, probably more than I should, so now I'm learning way more than I ever wanted to know. And collection of water is absolutely going to be one of the most essential things. And I don't blame the developer or any of our town staff, but this is just another example of a really frustrating situation that's so close, but because of luck, we, it, we, we hamper our ability to recharge. And as, there's no single person to blame, it's just the system that I'd like to see us fix in the future.
Okay, anything else?
Motion.
Me.
Okay. Oh, boy. It is a long one. Okay, I'm going, bear with me just a second. I'm working on it.
Mister Mayor, can I ask another question before she goes with the?
We have an open motion on the floor, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'm looking at this permits for the development shall not be issued until the maintenance improvement district has been recorded with the county. We have a timeframe on that at all, Will? Or that county supervisor sitting in the back room?
We can throw him on, um, the, the, the overall nexus of that one is because the, the mid is a two stage, um, event, so there's the initial petition signing, which is occurring following a, a approval, um, and then after that, the plats have to record. And once they're recorded, they're then assigned parcel numbers and we, that's how the taxes are then assessed on the individual parcel numbers. So we're, we're just making sure that the, the maps are recorded, the parcel numbers are issued and then they're reflected on the final draft of the mid agreement. And then that's recorded and then they can pull permits.
Okay.
And Mister Mayor, a quick follow up on that item. Um, the, you will have in front of you shortly, uh, if it's not your next meeting, it'll be the one after that, the resolutions that actually form the mid. Right now, we have a petition from the landowner with a, a promise to, um, form and request to form and all of fees to be paid, uh, to get it formed. What we don't have yet is your actual formation of the maintenance improvement district, which will do via a pair of resolutions coming up soon.
So, thank you.
Andrew, for clarification, um, am I making a motion for D and E separately or together?
Um, separately, please.
Perfect.
And Vice Mayor Perkins, the motions are on your screen, if that helps you as well.
I got the short one.
That is the way to do it, the short one.
Okay, um. Okay, I make a motion, we approve item six D. Wow, this is confusing. To approve the Del North, Dell Soul North Minor Subdivision Final Plat, subject to the following condition. One permit for the development shall not be issued until the maintenance improvement district has been recorded with the county.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mister Mayor, I am not opposed, but in all good conscience with charging people taxes and using more water and septics, I am going to abstain.
Okay.
No, didn't.
Motion carries with one abstain.
Okay, um, with that, I will make a motion, uh, for item E, consideration, okay. I make a motion, we approve the Dell Soul South Minor Subdivision Final Plat, subject to the following condition. One permits for the development shall not be issued until the maintenance improvement district has been recorded with the county.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will again abstain, please.
Okay, motion carries six, one abstain. For that, Mister Turner?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
I knew you wouldn't abstain from that one.
No, no.
We didn't bring her sleeping bag.
Water, money. Okay. That costs too much of a. That costs too much.
You know?